We're live on Facebook.
Thank you, Jeff.
Josh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, John, we can hear you. Still awaiting a quorum. Matt is joining us. Mr. Wilson is in the council chambers. John is here. Matt is logging in with audio. Hello, Matt. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hey, Matt. I sent an email to you, I guess on Friday, asking about your availability to participate in the Architectural Advisory Committee group.
Okay.
It was kind of a survey type of email to try to gauge your availability. And we have two that have indicated they are available next Wednesday, the 27th.
Okay, yeah.
Wonder if you might be available at that time.
Let me look at my calendar real quick. Orson, year 27. Yeah, Wednesday, 27th should be just fine.
Okay. Now we'll send out a notice and we can publish that in paper and we'll also inform each of y'all about that meeting. It will be a remote meeting, by the way.
Okay.
We'll let you know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, also, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Do still fill out that survey that I sent. We're going to try to have that meeting on the 27th, but also fill out the other dates you'd be available.
Okay.
It was sent last Friday afternoon, probably 5:00 or so, 5:30, somewhere in there.
I'm not, I'm not seeing it. That's why I was just looking through my email. Did you send it to, to the city email or to?
You know, it might be your work email.
Yeah. John, the time is now 5:03. If we want to get the meeting started, it looks like we have two people that have yet to join us, but we should have quorum.
So, I only see a few names on here. We have myself, Mr. Harris, John Wilson, Sean Fennell. Who else is here?
Oh, Ms. Hibbler is here as well.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, Sean's here. So we're just missing Dr. Organe and Albert. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, well, then before we, before we call the meeting to order, I will go ahead and get started. Jeff, do you need to begin a recording? Are we live streamed?
We are live streamed already and the meeting is being recorded.
Very good. All right, allow me to read this, allow me to read this notice real quick. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders Number 16 and Number 34 regarding public meeting and social distancing and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, members of the Planning Commission may participate by electronic means and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members of the City of, and members and citizens of Gallatin. I believe we need to have a vote, we need to vote on holding the meeting remotely. At least we did that with the last time. Is that procedural?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it is.
Okay. Then I will make a motion that we hold this meeting livestreamed remotely. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, John.
That was second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion of holding the meeting remotely. Josh, will you call the roll call?
Yes. Mr. Strather. Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Mr. Councilman Fennell.
Ah.
Mr. Wilson. Dr. Organe. Dr. Organe. Mr. Chairman, you have five yeas and two absences.
Very well. Well, with that, the motion is approved and we'll proceed with the, we'll call to order the meeting of the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission for Monday, May 18th, 2020. And we'll start with a short invocation. If you'll please bow your head. Dear Lord, please watch over these proceedings tonight and help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the city, citizens of Gallatin, our community. And please, Lord, be with those who are in need and alone, who are facing illness or illness of family members. Be with them and comfort them. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen. I will say, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know that it's necessary to stand, but if you'll, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible. Liberty and justice.
Just as.
Will you please, Josh or Mary Ann, whoever we have there, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Strather. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Hibbler.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Dr. Organe.
Here.
Mr. Perrier.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have six present and one absent. You do have a quorum.
Okay. And the one absent, was that Dr. Organe?
Mr. Strather.
Strather, thank you. So does the secretary have minutes to present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've got minutes dated February the 24th. I move we approve.
Note that I will abstain from voting. I was not present for those. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes dated February 24th.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Harris. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Please, Josh, will you please take a roll call vote to approve the minutes?
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler. Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Ah.
Mr. Wilson.
Ah.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Perrier.
I was not present. I can't vote.
That's five yeas and one abstention.
The minutes are approved. I'd like to add, y'all will make a note, we will add one item under Other Business at the end. It's a Tennessee Grassland Clubhouse. It'll be a discussion item, not a voting item. So we'll move to the consent agenda. We have, we have nine items, items number one through nine on the consent agenda, but items number eight and nine have been deferred. I'm sorry, let me first ask, for a public comment, is there anyone in the public who would like to pull any item off of consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we have two members of the public that have raised their hands to speak. So I'm going to call on Leslie Mendoza first.
Here.
Hello, Mr. and Ms. Mendoza?
Yes.
Did you have any public comment and consent agenda items?
Uh, no.
Okay. Are you here to speak on any of the other items on the agenda tonight?
Oh, yes.
Do you know which item?
Oh, no.
Okay. I'm sorry, you were breaking up there at the end.
I'm sorry?
You were breaking up at the end? The agenda item?
No, no, I can hear you good. And can you hear me good? Or what do you mean?
We can hear you clearly now.
Okay, yeah. And what do you mean? What are you asking me? I'm sorry, my English is not good. And I understand some things.
You raised your hand to speak?
Oh, yeah, a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Leo, you're on.
Michelle, you've been unmuted. Did you have a comment on consent agenda items?
I have a comment on a non-consent agenda item.
Okay, do you know which item that is?
Yes, on Woolhawk.
All right. Michelle, when that item comes up, I'll call on you again.
Thank you, Josh.
Is there anyone else? Last three, 166 or 167, your lines have been unmuted? Last three, 253, your line's been unmuted? Mr. Chair, no one else, no one else has indicated that they'd like to speak on a consent agenda item.
Very good. Then we will close the public hearing on the consent agenda items. And I'll ask the members of the commission, is there anyone on the commission who wishes to have any of the items one through seven removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve items one through seven of the consent agenda as one item.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Count Fennell and a second by, I'm sorry, again.
Wilson.
Mr. Wilson. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by, well, we'll take a roll call vote to Josh, will you please call the roll call vote?
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Fennell. We'll go back to him. Mr. Wilson. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Come on, Sean. I'm sorry, I was unmuted.
And Josh, we also need a vote from Mr. Perrier.
Oh, Mr. Perrier.
Aye.
So that's six yeas and one absent.
Okay, consent agenda, motion is approved and we'll move on to the regular agenda, which will be, the first one on the regular agenda will be item number 10, which is Resolution Number 2020-084. Hunt Club Med Spa, a final master development plan. Which staff member is handling this item?
That would be me again, Mr. Chairman. This is Josh King with the Planning Department. The applicant is proposing a final master development plan for Hunt Club. It's Hunt Club Med Spa proposing two 3,500 square foot commercial buildings on 1.22 acres at 1501 Hunt Club Boulevard. This is the southeast corner of Nashville Pike and Hunt Club Boulevard. It's currently a vacant lot. It's zoned MU, mixed use and medical services is a permitted use in the MU zoning district. The applicant is proposing amended buffer yards on the eastern and southern property boundaries that abut the additional MU zoning. They're proposing a modified type 25 buffer yard along Nashville Pike and a modified, modified type 10 buffer yard along Hunt Club Boulevard. An alternative buff yard is proposed due to existing utility easements and lines. The applicant is proposing to keep many of the existing trees that are in the buffer area with tree protection fencing and supplement existing landscaping with additional buffer yards to make up for the deficits in the amended buffer yard areas. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2020-084. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, do we have a representative for the applicant? I believe Greenlit Design is representing them.
Megan Heisler is representing Greenlit Design and just had to promote her so that she could speak.
Hello, you guys.
Megan, can you hear us?
I can. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For Hunt Club Med Spa. And if y'all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff or for Megan? I'll lead off with a question. Is there a way, Josh, can you use the, maybe the arrow indicator, the mountain indicator to show us where the existing trees are?
Sure. Dustin, can you go? Thank you. So there is existing trees here along Nashville Pike, right around the fence area. And there are some existing trees here along Hunt Club Boulevard. There are a few larger trees that'll be removed from within the site in the area that's proposed to be both parking lot and building. There's also existing trees here along an internal access road that will be preserved.
Does anyone else have any questions? I believe the plan looks good and the modified buffer, I have no concerns about the modified buffer they're showing right there. Any other questions or concerns? Matt?
Yeah, so, so Josh and maybe even Megan. So, so the existing trees that are all around Nashville Pike, those, those are all going to be able to stay. Is that what I'm understanding? Several of them will stay. I believe a majority of them will stay. There are a few that are in and, in and around this area here where there's supposed to be a sidewalk. We're going to try and field locate the sidewalk to avoid impacting those trees as much as possible. And the applicant is also supplementing landscaping in this area and here along the existing drive access in the rear. Okay. No, I think, I think it looks good.
So on the sidewalk, I think we ran into another property up the street from this a few years ago where in order to preserve some trees, we wanted to allow the sidewalk to be serpenting, kind of meander in and out. But that took it on and off the right of way. Is that what you intend to do here? Because I think my vote would be yes, in order to preserve those trees along Nashville Pike.
We do have a good bit of T-dot right of way between where this site is and where the edge of pavement is. So that's something that we can look at on how best to fit the sidewalk within that area to minimize damage to the existing trees.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
We have a motion to approve the staff's comments.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Harris to approve with all the staff's conditions and seconded by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to approve the motion. Josh, please call the roll call vote.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Ah.
Mr. Wilson. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, that's six yeas and one absent.
Okay, motion approved. We'll move on to item number 11, which is Resolution Number 2020-077. Woolhawk Annexation and Plan of Service. Who's handling that item?
Gillian Ogden, Staff Planner. Can you hear me, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. If no one has an issue with it, the next three items kind of go together. So I'm happy to present them all together, although they will need separate voting and they will require a public hearing.
Gillian, we're getting some feedback on yours.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can hear it much clearer, yes.
Okay, see if that helps. So for the Woolhawk project, this does cover item 11, oh, item 12, and item 13. And I will be discussing them all at one time if no one has any objections to that.
Certainly. Go ahead.
How many acres is the entire amount, Gillian?
So for the annexation, we are annexing 524.14 acres. But for the comprehensive plan amendment and for the rezoning, that is 646.61 acres. So on the map that you have in front of you, this includes seven different parcels specific to the annexation. On your screen, if you do not include the red and the purple, all of the other parcels are included in the annexation request. The red and the purple are already within city limits, so they don't have to be included in that. The area under discussion is bordered by Roundtree to the north, Brights Lane to the east, and Hartsfield Pike to the south. It is also adjacent to our Gallatin Industrial Center. And as I explained on your screen, is, is a map of just the seven parcels involved in, in this total request for the annexation. We're specifically talking about only five. Next slide, please. So these are the five parcels that are, that is the land that's included in the annexation request. You can see the little, there's a shaded area directly adjacent to it in the middle. That is city property or within the city limits. So you can kind of see how they are contiguous to the city limits of Gallatin. Next slide, please. So this annexation into the city must also include a plan of services for the Planning Commission and City Council to consider. And that information has been included in your packet and will be sent along to City Council for additional review. This request for the annexation will go on to City Council with Planning, with a Planning Commission recommendation. And there will be an additional public hearing at that time, as there will be one tonight. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is item number 12, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment includes seven parcels as shown on the map for 646.61 acres. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting to change the character area of the seven parcels from rural community and suburban neighborhood emerging to airport road industrial community character area. Showing on your screen is the current character map. If you go to the next slide. This would be the change should Planning Commission approve it. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment is requested in conjunction with the rezoning request for additional industrially zoned land within city limits. This change will act to implement objectives in the, in the Gallatin on the Move 2020 plan, including continuing efforts to recruit and support new business, guiding new technological, industrial, and commercial development to appropriate areas of the community, and providing vacant land to be designated and prepared for industrial development. So the request for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is only for Planning Commission review. This will not go on to City Council as opposed to the annexation request and the rezoning, which I will discuss next. The rezoning request is item number 13 on tonight's agenda. It also includes all seven parcels that are included in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. If you could go to the next slide, please. They are requesting rezoning of seven parcels from two county zonings, R1A and MDR-PUD, R15 PRD. Those are all primarily residential zonings, and agricultural residential to IR industrial restrictive. This is the more restrictive industrial zoning used in the city and is consistent with the zoning of the Gallatin Industrial Center. Please note that a rezoning to an industrial zoning does not require a master plan. The Planning Commission will review a site plan once the applicant or owner is ready to move forward with development. Site plans do not, are not reviewed by City Council. While we do not have a site plan for consideration tonight, the proposed zoning does have requirements and restrictions that any developer would have to follow, including a buffer of at least 75 feet between any proposed structures and any residentially zoned property. Showing on your screen is the current zoning map. And on the next slide, this would be the change should City Council approve it. This request will go on to City Council with a Planning Commission recommendation with the annexation and plan of service and have an additional public hearing at that time. Staff does recommend approval of the three items before you this evening for the Woolhawk project. This completes my presentation. James Fenton with EDA is here to represent the case and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
James, if you're representing the applicant in this case, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Ms. Ogden did a really good job of presenting everything. Please let me know your concerns or questions, but we're trying to move this project forward in hopes of helping this community make sure we come out of the pandemic in the best position possible.
Very good. Is that all, James?
Please, if you have questions. Please, if you have questions, I'm, I'm prepared to answer most of them. I, I think we have a, a really good presentation. And, um, if there are more specifics that are required, ask me and I'll, I'll do my best to present those to the city.
Very good. Well, let's do it this way then. Um, let's have questions from, uh, the commission, but let's, we'll also hold a, a public comment. Um, and then once we hear any questions, I'll circle back to you, James, so that you can respond to those. Uh, before I open the comment, I just wanted to, um, maybe summarize something for the public to make sure everyone listening understands, um, some of the terms that, that Gillian used. Um, we're dealing with the three items. We're presenting them all as one, but there are three items we will vote on. The Annexation and Plan of Service seven, um, that's the item that will go on to City Council. The reason that the item 12, the change to the Comprehensive, uh, Plan Amendment doesn't go to City Council is that that's a guide that the commission uses. That's not a guide that, uh, necessarily City Council, um, uses. So that's an internal. And then the, um, I'm sorry, item 13 is the rezoning. What did I say? The annexation was item number 11. But if any one of the public wants to speak, this is the time to speak without anything to do with public. So Josh, do we have anybody raising their hand? I will open a public hearing, um, and allow anybody in the public to, to speak. And if you do speak, please, please try to limit your comments to maybe three or four minutes so that everyone has a chance to speak.
Michelle, your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, this is Michelle Juvant, uh, Chairman Perrier and Planning Commissioners. I just had a couple of questions about this, um, both the annexation and the rezoning for Woolhawk. Um, first of all, I was wondering when will, uh, the Planning Commission's feasibility report on the Plan of Service be ready? And I'm especially interested in your opinions on, uh, how the city is going to pay for the new fire station number six that is being required in the Plan of Service? And then also how the city is going to be paying for the extra police that's required, um, especially with, um, our limited budget at this time with our budget cuts. Um, I also, um, am interested in the, the one hundred foot buffer that was talked about in the, um, in the, uh, I think it was in the development agreement where it was saying that if any of the adjacent properties in the future were developed in a residential manner, that those adjacent properties would be required to put in a one hundred foot buffer. So it seems to me that actually this commercial property should be the one responsible to be putting in that buffer, not the residential development, because it seems that the, um, it shouldn't be who's there first, but who, whoever is the one that has the higher use, um, should be putting in the buffer. Um, so I'd like to hear your, um, discussion on those items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Josh, who else do we have?
We have, uh, Ms. Mendoza, your line's been unmuted.
Uh, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, caller with the last three, one, six, six, or caller with the last three, one, six, seven. Caller with the last three, two, five, three. Caller with the last three, nine, three, two, your lines have been unmuted. If there's anyone else that's participating, uh, via the computer, y- if you could go into the participants bar and raise your hand and let us know that you'd like to speak on this item. Mr. Chair, that concludes all of the, uh, all of the participants.
All right, then I will close the public hearing. And we'll proceed with questions from, uh, members of the commission for either staff or for Mr. Fenton. Well, I'll lead off with one. Um, James, I know this doesn't require a site plan, um, for the, uh, annexation and plan of service, um, and the rezoning. Uh, but I just wanted to reiterate what we talked about in the work session. As I understand it, it will be one, maybe ninety thousand, or a, maybe a two acre building, um, in the center of this property. And there's a lot of open space around it. And if I understood correctly, there will not be road connections to Brights Lane or Highway 25. That this will, um, be connected through Gateway Drive in the industrial park. Are all of those, are my understandings correct?
No, sir, they're not.
Oh, I'm sorry?
This bill, and, and if, if you allow me to share my screen, I'll need just Dustin to allow me to share my screen. Okay, let me figure this out here. Um, I'm not sure how I'm, how I'm getting there. Um, but there will be a connection to Highway 25. And that's very important to this development. That will come down through, um, gosh.
James, would you like for me to share my screen and use the cursor? It's Rosemary Bates.
Uh, I appreciate that. I think, um, yes, if you would, um, I'm having technical difficulties. If, if Rosemary, if you would share the, um, yes, this, yes. And, um, if you would, uh, drag your cursor, Ms. Bates, down where the connection to 25 would be. Uh, Mr. Chair, do you under, do you see where that, where her cursor is?
Yes, I do. And the green parcel?
Yes. There will be a connection to 25 there, and it will connect to the cul-de-sac up in front of the, uh, Beretta facility where her cursor is now. Is that clear?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
All right. Now, if you will go over to the, the, the blue tract that's highlighted, the development will all be on that tract. Ms. Bates has outlined very, very well the area where this development will be. All the rest of that property is set up for buffer. This, uh, this prospect wants to make sure that they have no negative impact on surrounding territories. And so, and there is a, uh, Mr. Gregory has a one hundred and seventy-six acre tract just to the west of the blue tract. Yes, that one. And that will, in, that will have a road that goes through it. But not much else as far as development is concerned. All of the buildings that they're considering will be on that blue tract. And Ms. Bates, if you'll go to the next, um, piece.
So James, while you're on.
Yes. No, go ahead. Go back, Ms. Bates. Thank you.
Okay, so the road that connects, um, through the property owned by Mr. Gregory currently, uh, that ties off of that cul-de-sac. Will that be a public street or will that be a private, uh, street belonging to Woolhawk?
Good question. No, it will be a public street. They are paying for it to be constructed, but it will be a public road. And Ms. Bates, if you'll go to the next screen, I would appreciate it. And so, as you can see to the far left, right over there is the cul-de-sac that exists right now where she has her cursor. And that is where the, the road ends right now. And that road will go south from there and head towards 25. But that will be a public road. All the rest of the roads that you see described there are going to be private. But, uh, again, the, the, the prospect will be paying for not only the public roads, but their own private roads, of course.
So what you're showing us here is the, uh, the site plan. I mean, that, that's the concept of what's going in on this large property.
Yes, sir. In the northwest corner of these squares, that is where the building that they are committing to will be located. And you'll notice that they, it, it is hundreds of yards, if not thousands of yards from any, uh, um, other residential. Now, there will be additional development. They are making plans for an additional four buildings, but it will be within those same boundaries. And that's why they're purchasing eight hundred and two acres so that they are really well buffered from anything around the, the area.
Hey, I've got a question about the buffer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in the presentation there, there were, I heard seventy-five foot. Then again, I heard a se, a hundred foot, which is correct.
Um, they have asked that if there are additional properties in the area that are up for consideration to be rezoned for residential, that there be a hundred foot buffer. However, um, the fact, the matter is that there is no property in the city at this point in time surrounding the site. So this body will not have to consider that, will not have to take that into consideration.
Mr. Wilson, this is Rosemary Bates. The seventy-five foot buffer is the buffer yard required with industrial zoning. And Gillian can address that requirement, uh, for industrial zoning when it abuts other properties.
Yes, um, that's just specific to the IR zoning, um, that anytime you have IR zoning, any buildings can't be within seventy-five feet of a residentially zoned adjacent lot. So that's just something specific to the zoning. They would have to adhere to that here, um, even though I think their intent is to have bigger buffers than that.
Okay, thank you. You've made it clear for me. Thank you.
Ask that you move this forward as presented this evening.
A question, um, and James, you don't have to answer this for me. It's Matt Harris. The, uh, what kind of traffic impact as far as, I don't know how many employees they think they're going to have, but what kind of impact on traffic might this have on Highway 25?
That will be addressed at the, um, PMDP and FMDP, uh, um, portion of this. Uh, that's really not a, a, a part of this conversation. I will say though that, um, they are committing to forty badged employees, meaning employees that work for the company. They will have, they're estimating another one hundred, uh, subcontractors. Still only one hundred and forty, uh, employees coming in and out of there on a daily basis.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Yes, for clarification for the board, uh, there is no FMD or PMDP. It would be a site plan. And engineering will make a determination on the type of, uh, uh, traffic study that will be required. Of course, as we mentioned, there will be public access to Gateway Drive Extension, which will connect both to, uh, Gateway Drive where it currently is and will impact Airport Road as well as Hartsfield Pike.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, uh, add to this conversation, um, this, uh, protect, particular prospect has been incredibly well engaged with our engineering department, uh, from day one and have provided traffic studies already, which were not even required at this point in time, uh, and are looking to, um, actually support fiscally any improvements that are needed to ensure that there are no traffic concerns.
Well, I just want to chime in and say I really appreciate you sharing this site plan with us because I know that the, uh, site plan is not a requirement for any of the three items that we're voting on tonight. And, uh, but this really helps me and I think everybody in the public to understand the concept of what's going in there. Uh, I know it's a large, on a map, it's a large area that we're changing the character of. But when you look at this, this is a great deal for the surrounding, right, the surrounding community because this is one large bit, well, it's a campus inside a very large six hundred acre parcel or five hundred and eighty-seven acre parcel. The alternative to this, be that we expand our industrial park and have, um, ten or twelve, fifteen different businesses in there that I might add could make a lot of noise. And I don't think this is going to be a, a, a noise pollution or necessarily a light pollution or, or visibility issue. So I'm excited about the project. Any other questions? Oh, and by the way, let the record show that Albert Strather has joined us, so we have, uh, everybody, everyone present.
I'd like to say, John, that I echo everything you say. I think it's a low-impactive, uh, building, business, uh, industry for the city of Gallatin and, and, and I'm really, uh, pleased about it. I look forward to them.
I'm appreciative of the support.
Chairman, this is Gillian Ogden, Staff Planner. Um, I can address, uh, the, Michelle's question about the feasibility study. Um, the annexation study that we send to City Council will be ready mid Ju, mid June. We usually have that through the City Council before the, by the public hearing date, which would likely be June 16th in this case.
Thank you, Gillian. Any other questions or comments or, uh, from any member of the commission? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion on, uh, item number 11, which is the, um, Annexation and Plan of Service.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilman Fennell.
And I'll, Matt will second it.
Seconded by, uh, Matt Harris. Any discussion on that? Then, uh, Josh, will you please take a roll call vote on the, uh, motion to approve the Annexation and Plan of Service?
Mr. Strather? Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler?
Aye.
Councilman Fennell?
Uh.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
Aye.
Mr. Perrier?
Aye.
It is a unanimous vote.
Motion approved. Um, now, item number 12, which is also Woolhawk, uh, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Um, this does not go forward to council. This is, uh, uh, changing our comprehensive plan within Planning Commission. I'll make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Second.
Do I hear it? Seconded by, I'm sorry?
Dr. Organe.
Councilman, uh.
Dr. Organe made a second.
Thank you. Seconded by Dr. Organe. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Josh, will you take a roll call vote on the? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Josh, will you take a roll call vote on the motion to approve the, uh, change to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment?
Mr. Strother?
Ah.
Mr. Harris?
Hi.
Ms. Hibbler?
Hi.
Councilman Fennell?
Ah.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Purrier?
Ah.
Mr. Chair, you have a unanimous vote.
Motion approved. Um, now, item number thirteen is the, um, also Woolhawk, is the rezoning with preliminary master development plan.
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, no preliminary master development plan, just straight.
For me, um, that's, that's written on the written on the minute that's with preliminary master development plan. Let me restate that. Uh, it's just a motion to approve the zoning. The re- the rezoning.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
And we seconded by, uh, Albert Strother. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Um, the motion has been made to approve the rezoning request. Um, Josh, will you take a roll call vote?
Mr. Strother?
Ah.
Mr. Harris?
Hi.
Ms. Hibbler?
Hi.
Councilman Fennell?
Ah.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Purrier?
Ah.
Mr. Chair, it's a unanimous vote.
Motion approved. Um, item, we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is, uh, Resolution Number Two Zero Two Zero Dash O Eight Six, uh, Home for the Aged. It's, uh, zoning text amendment. Bill, I'm assuming you're handling this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is also, I'm, I'm not sure if y'all have the most up-to-date agenda or not, because we made changes, supposed to make changes to the agenda. This is actually a zoning code amendment, which will address community residential homes, of which Home for the Aged is one of many types of community residential homes. So, um, I wanted to make that clear. And, um, as our request goes, we have a resolution before you that will amend our zoning code. Uh, primarily, as you see in Exhibit A, uh, it's a draft ordinance that will be considered by the Planning Commission and also forwarded to, uh, the City Council. Uh, this, uh, ordinance will change the definition of community residential home is currently is narrowly tailored to essentially mirror, uh, Tennessee Code annotated, uh, Title Thirteen, Chapter Twenty-four, Section One-O-One through One-O-Four, which is, uh, currently a home for persons with a disability. So there are other provisions in the state statute, which are very similar to a home for persons with disability. And the main intent here is that we wanted to expand this definition to allow those similar types of homes to also reside, uh, as part of a community residential home. And those, uh, are not, uh, facilities that are necessarily the primary purpose is to provide medical care, but essentially to allow for a residence of people who does not require medical care as the primary use of the home. So as described in the statute in, uh, Title Sixty-eight, Chapter Eleven, Section Two-O-One, there, there are forty-some-odd different types of, of these types of homes that fall under that definition, uh, is used in the state statute. But we selected just a few of them that are almost identical or very similar to a person's with disability-type home. And those would be adult care home, uh, home for the aged, um, which is primarily elderly persons, assisted care facility, uh, home for the aged resident, and another one, which is a traumatic brain injury residential home. And these are specific terms that are defined in the statute and incorporated within the L, uh, uh, definition of our code, which you see right there under community residential home. So, uh, it also has some provisions to allow for a resident manager. These are licensed zones by the State of Tennessee. And, uh, we'll have some limitations, and I'll get into that briefly, on how expansive these homes can be. So the whole intent is to allow, just like we do for the persons with disabilities homes, to allow these in, in residential zoning districts. So simply by changing the definition, it qualifies these for inclusion into the, uh, most of our residential zoning districts. In addition, it would require it to be a conditional use. So they'll have to meet all the conditional use standards in our code, uh, including some specific standards, which will also apply to community residential homes, which are permitted use by right without having to get a conditional use. But it will require conditional use in the higher-density, uh, residential areas, namely in the R-six zoning district and in some, our mixed-use districts, which also are generally higher or medium-density residential, including the MRO District, the MU District, the MUG District, which we have very few properties in that district. The MUL District, which we even have less properties in that district. But they would qualify for, uh, a community residential home if they can comply with this conditional use standards. And also the general office district. Uh, the, um, specific use for a home health provider would be identified as a home occupation. Obviously, these, uh, services will be provided in a home. So a home service, home health service provider occupational, uh, home license would be a permitted use as well. And that person doesn't necessarily have to work in that home. They could have their business from their home and, uh, go to other persons' homes to conduct that business. For the details for a conditional use permit are described and will be added to Article Fifteen, uh, for specific standards in residential areas. And these would provide these ten different conditions that would have to be met or limitations, if you will, for a community residential home. These would apply both for permitted uses and for conditional uses. Uh, the conditional uses have to meet four other standards, which are more general to all conditional uses throughout the city. So th- these conditions would also apply as a condition of approval for a permitted use. And so I, I don't want to go through in each one of these, but generally it's to limit the density of all, uh, of the community residential homes, how closely they can be located to one another, with the exception of the community residential home defined in Thirteen Twenty-Four One-O-One, which is, um, exempt from the separation requirements. It also will limit the number of residents that, uh, can be located in these homes. It states that it's, the home can, is not primarily for use for, uh, medical services only. And that, um, of course, they would have to, um, comply with the state regulations as well and be ADA compliant, comply with the building code. So they would be inspected each year by our building department for compliance with those requirements. So there's also some minor parking restrictions that would be applied. So parking would be in the back, so you won't have the front yard uh, modified to, uh, accommodate only parking vehicles. So, uh, no signs would be on the property as well. So with that, we're recommending approval of this, uh, modification of the ordinance. We've talked about it at several meetings throughout uh, the last six months, really, or more, I even. And, uh, we think that this will, uh, accommodate not only the issue that was brought to y'all's attention back in, uh, the fall, but it will also address others very similar or almost identical residential settings. So we're recommending approval of this, uh, draft ordinance and the resolution before you.
Hey, this is Latasha, Staff Attorney, Latasha Alexander, I'm sorry. But I did want to express, and I've, I've told Bill my concerns regarding, um, one of the types of homes that is listed in what Bill has presented. Um, it's the traumatic brain injury residential home. My only concern with that home is, um, in order to be a provider in that home, you really have to be a medical, um, you either have to be a physician, a nurse practitioner, a registered nurse, a licensed rehabilitation professional, or a licensed mental health professional. And my concern is if the intent is to have the homes be something other than primary purpose to provide medical care, this home, in my opinion, provides a problem to the residential area because the fact that the providers have to be medical providers makes me believe it has more of a primary purpose for medical care. So I did want to advise this body of my concerns with that one home.
So I think what I'm hearing Ms. Alexander say is that the, um, traumatic brain injuries would be along the same line as, uh, well, hospice. The, Bill, you've excluded hospice from this list because it's such intense medical care. Uh, I believe, if I, if I understand your notes correctly, hospice is not one of the permitted uses, is it?
That's correct.
So, and, and I noticed under D, um, these homes are not meant for intravenous, intravenous therapy or feedings or, or I can't even pronounce some of those. Tracheado, tracheotomy, uh, aspiration, heavy medical care. So what is, what are the rest of y'all, how do the rest of y'all feel about that one item that is traumatic brain injuries?
Well, hey, it's my, my question is, um, what, what's the reason that we haven't included in there? I mean, Bill, is there, was there, was there something that, that made you include that into this text amendment or, or is it something that, that could be left out of it?
Um, in the, under the state definition, which is, uh, included in your agenda uh, on page nine of an attachment there. It talks about, and it, um, identifies the personnel and, and character of that type of use. And, um, it doesn't say medical care necessarily. It says include an assistance of daily activities or daily living uh, in a home-like environment for disabled adults who are suffering from traumatic brain injury. So it does require that this person, that the home provider itself meets certain qualifications, which is described in, uh, the next definition, traumatic brain injury resident home provider, residential home provider. So, uh, it does require a professional to, to adhere to that, but it doesn't necessarily mean simply that they have to have constant, you know, medical care like, uh, uh, would say a hospice, uh, resident would. So. Yeah, it's a variety. I, I suppose you could have a, quite a wide variety of trauma, traumatic brain injury patients or, or residents that some may require and some may not require that constant attention.
Yeah, but I think you'd read, I'm reading the text for that. You know, I, I guess it's paragraph forty-four in there, and it says, you have the, oh, the, the care provider, raises under forty-five, you, you either have a you know, certified specialist or hold of current positions licensed as a physician or practitioner, et cetera. So so it doesn't require that they have to be a, a medical professional, just have to have a certain certification. So I don't, I don't know whether that really bothers me. If that's, if, if it's an either or, it's, it's almost like it's, you know, the minimum standard is a certification, but if you have a higher level of certification, then that would suffice, but you don't have to be, it doesn't have to be medical as a, as a nurse or physician necessarily. Is that my, is that what I'm, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, that's that, that's that number forty-five there on page nine from the statute.
Okay.
Yeah, I respect what Ms. Alexander's saying, but I, I really believe traumatic brain injuries are that's not as intense as the hospice and some others. So I, I would be fine with it in there.
Yeah, and after, after, after looking back, I think I am too, because it's, if it said it, you know, must be a medical, a licensed medical, you know, a physician or a nurse, then that's different. But since it has a, a lower certification, then I, I'm okay with it.
Well, do we have any other questions or feedback from any of the other commission?
Mr. Chairman, this is Josh King. Uh, if you intend on taking a vote on this item tonight, we do need to open up a public hearing on it.
Oh, very well.
That's what I was getting ready to inquire about. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm sorry, I will open a public hearing on item number fourteen, which is the, uh, tech, zoning text amendment um, concerning the Home for the Aged. Do we have anyone, uh, raising their hand who wishes to speak? Josh?
If you are joining us from a computer, please raise your hand to let me know that you'd like to speak on this item. Or if you are one of our four phone call-in listeners, one-six-six, one-six-seven, two-five-three, or nine-three-two, your lines have been unmuted if you'd like to make a public comment on this item. Mr. Chairman, no one has indicated they'd like to speak on this item.
Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, uh, or public comment. And, um, I'll entertain a motion from, uh, a member of the commission regarding item number fourteen. I will make to approve, uh, item number fourteen was passed come. I'm sorry, I would make a motion to approve item number fourteen. Do we hear it? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hibbler?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll, um, call for the vote. Josh, will you take a roll call vote on the motion to approve, uh, the zoning text amendment for the Home for the Aged?
Mr. Strother?
Ah.
Mr. Harris?
Hi.
Ms. Hibbler?
Hi.
Councilman Fennell?
Ah.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Purrier?
Ah.
Mr. Chair, you have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Motion approved. We'll move on to item number fifteen, which is, uh, uh, Resolution Number Two Zero Two Zero Dash O Eight Seven, Habitat for Humanity, uh, Final Master Development Plan. Which staff members handling that item?
This is Dustin Shane, Goulton Planning Department. Um, as stated, thank you. Um, as stated, this is Habitat for Humanities, uh, FMDP. Um, it's located there on your screen. You see on West Eastland. Um, the zoning is R-six. Uh, it's got some surrounding zoning of R-six and also R-ten. Uh, it was originally part, uh, Lot Four of an original Habitat subdivision. Uh, what they're proposing is nine single-family home lots, one open space tract, and one right-of-way. Um, they're asking for an exception to the lot size requirement, uh, which is six thousand square feet minimum. Uh, and they're getting close to four thousand on at least one lot. Uh, smaller lot sizes were approved with the PMDP, uh, approval. Um, and they're also, it's basically a, a decrease in density, uh, from the original uh, PMDP approval of eleven units down to nine units. Um, we worked out with the applicant, uh, that the buffer yards will be placed in open space tracks, uh, around the perimeter um, to head off any of those issues that we had encountered in the past with uh, buffer yards being located on the lots themselves. Uh, but this has resulted in some smaller lots and, uh, some adjustments to the rear setbacks. Uh, so that's why they're requesting those exceptions there. Uh, and many of the buffer yards should be able to preserve, uh, a good bit of the existing trees, which exist along the perimeter. Uh, they're also asking for an architecture exception, uh, to the brick, stone, and stone requirement. Um, and this will be compatible with what's, uh, existing in that neighborhood now. All right. Thank you.
And do we have a representative for the applicant here tonight?
Yes, Megan Heisler with Greenwood Design.
Thank you. Go ahead, Megan.
Um, I mean, it's basically what, um, Dustin stated. Uh, I mean, if y'all have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, Megan, it's, it's Matt Harris. The, does this plan, did it, did this address the concerns you guys had about the rear setbacks and making sure the houses were going to fit on the lots?
Um, well, like, uh, Dustin stated, we would have the same, um, where the rear setbacks are right now, or where, where they were previously. We would keep it the same. We wouldn't, um, change that because we are giving it the open space.
Yeah, yeah, I think this, this looks like what we talked about in the first session. So I, I, you know, I don't see any problems with it.
Mr. Harris, this is Josh King. Uh, we worked specifically with the applicant on the smallest lots are next to the open space lot lots are next to the open space lot, to still give some more of an open feeling, even though the lot size is the smallest of the nine that are shown.
Okay, yeah, it's, I think you guys did a good job with this.
Well, with that, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to, a motion regarding the item.
That's, I think the motion that we approve with the staff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Hibler?
Uh, yes, sir. I just want to disclose, before we do this part, I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute it. I'm a volunteer at Habitat for you, Matty, so I have met with them, just looking at this project with Greenlid, with Megan, so I just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, it's Harris. I'll make a motion to approve with the ten conditions on staff report.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Harris to approve with the ten conditions on staff report, seconded by Mrs. Hibler. And that, I'm pulling that up right now, the ten, one of the ten conditions was to approve the, the architecture as compatible with surrounding areas. Is that correct?
Believe it was.
Um, let's see, I don't think I had that as a, uh, explicit comment. It was just understood with the plan that that was an exception they were asking for.
Okay, well, I thought I was, in our review, I thought we need to, because we're in the process of putting some objective standards, we need to make clear in our motion that we are approving this architecture as part of the motion. Bill, do you want to step in here? Maybe I'm wrong. So, we have a motion on the floor with approval with all the staff's ten conditions, and a second by Mrs. Hibler. Do we have any discussion on that item?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I was muted. I just wanted to clarify that the condition, the resolution includes the architecture that was submitted with the application. So, just like the plan, with the exceptions to the rear yards, and the buffer zones, and the lot sizes, those are exceptions embedded into the plan, as is the architectural, conceptual architectural.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't approve that without satisfying that concern. So, we'll call for the roll call vote. We have a motion on the floor for approval.
Mr. Strather?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Councilman Fennell?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Organe?
Aye.
Mr. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, you have a unanimous vote.
Okay, motion approved. We'll move on to the final item on the regular agenda, which is Resolution Number Two Zero Two Zero Dash Oh Eight Eight, Foxland, I guess that's Phase Ten, amended preliminary master development plan, and revised final master development plan. Which staff, which staff members handling this item?
Gillian Ogden, staff planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gillian.
Yes, so Foxland Phase Ten is nearing completion, in performing a site surety review inspection. It came to our attention that the sidewalk had not been installed. We spoke with the developer, who wanted to reach out to us about not putting this sidewalk in. This is, would be along a private street. As you can see on the current plan, it's adjacent to Douglas Bend Road. It's not on Douglas Bend Road, it's on the side of the development of Douglas Bend Road. It doesn't, it wouldn't have serviced anybody else except for the people within the specific community. There is our sidewalks on the other side of the road, and again, this is a private right-of-way. This is not a public right-of-way. So, if you could go to the next slide. So, these are some pictures that were provided by the developer and the builder, to see the conditions. On the left-hand side of your page, you can see an existing buffer line, existing tree line along Douglas Bend Road. They would like to maintain that. That's a good buffer for those townhomes that are facing that, that public street, and there's not room to put a sidewalk. So, again, this is a private street, this isn't a public street, but because this was a master plan, staff felt this needed to come to planning commission, to formally, if you guys are comfortable, approving the removal of the sidewalk from the master plan, or not. Again, there are sidewalks on the other side, and this is a private road. It's not connecting to anything public. This was purely an internal sidewalk. Someone with Meritage Homes is here, so he can speak to it as well.
Okay. Yes, if we have a representative for the applicant, please speak up.
Hold on, he's raising his hand.
Mr. Gibbs, you've been unmuted. Uh, please raise your hand if you are representing the applicant on this item.
It's Joshua Gibbs. He's raising his hand.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, you are, you have been unmuted.
I don't see his microphone.
I don't either. I bet you.
Can you hear? Yes. I am here.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gibbs, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you for your time, Commissioners. We just wanted to formally make this request. We're finishing the development, and have run into some, some issues, understanding that this landscape buffer is great for our residents, as well as that the sidewalk doesn't serve any type of public access. And so, we are wanting to formally request that we be allowed to, to remove this section of sidewalk that will be more of a hindrance than a help.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you.
Any, I will just say that this is one situation where I certainly see that we can do away with the sidewalk. We'd do more harm trying to put it in than good. This hedgerow, it reminds me of the hedgerows you hear about in Normandy. The ground's burned up over the years, and dirt getting deposited in there, and all the growth is in that fence row. That fence row is really, really old. So, I'm completely in favor of allowing them to do away with that sidewalk requirement there. Any other, does anyone else have any input on that, or feedback?
Uh, yeah, I, I do, actually, John. You know, I, I think one of the issues we run into, especially these townhome developments, where we've got really short front yards, and two of the photographs that the applicants provided, is the biggest problem with the sidewalks in that area, is when people park in the driveways, they block the sidewalks. And so, there's, you know, so it makes anybody go, any of the residents living in there that want to go for a walk, have to wind up walking out into the street to, to do that. So, I, you know, it was the sidewalk as it was supposed to be installed, supposed to be up against the curb, just, you know, you kind of see, I don't know which, the first photograph, it's got the, it looks like the sidewalk's actually all the way against the curb on the other side of the street. Is that?
It is.
Supposed to be put in on the other side?
It's all, all the way against the street. It's pretty typical with our private streets, is the sidewalk to right up against it.
Yeah. Um, so, so I guess my, I guess mine's more of a comment that, you know, I see in this application that it doesn't, it doesn't work, given the topography, but it sure would be nice if there had been a way to have the sidewalk on the other side of the street, so when people park their cars over the sidewalk, people didn't have to walk out into the, in the street, even though it's private. But it might just something for us to consider to look at other projects.
Yeah, you know, Mrs. Hibler, I think you had a comment?
You're reading my mind now, huh? So, what Mr. Harris was saying, where the, is a grass sidewalk, and there's usually a median before the curb? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Harris?
Anyway, it is, yeah. Normally, that's what we'd have, but in this case, it's a private street, so you can see in the photographs, the sidewalks poured all the way to, to the curb. So...
Right.
I, you know, I actually, I mean, I drove through there today and looked at it, and I guess I'm not convinced it's not possible to install a sidewalk there, except for in maybe the one area where it burns up. For the most part, it was some tree trimming, it looked like it would be possible. I don't know, Gillian, did somebody from staff or engineering actually go out and look, look at this in person, or you guys have any more comments on it?
I mean, we've seen it in person when we were inspecting, looking at the road itself. I would agree, the berm along Douglas Bend, I mean, that's, I don't know that a sidewalk is super feasible there. But, but again, this is a private road, so it's, it's, it's different than a, a public road. It's at your discretion a little bit here.
What about putting the sidewalk on the other side, so that people on Douglas Bend can use it?
Well, this is Joshua Gibbs. May I make a comment?
Yes, please, go ahead.
To that question. With five thousand daily traffic cars coming on that road, as well as, there is not much room on Douglas Bend, if you're going, if you're ongoing, if you're on Douglas Bend going, that would be north and south. There's not much room on that road. There's an open ditch on the other side, the west side of this, this, this buffer, and, and that road has just been paved. It's, it looks brand new, effectively. I would just be very concerned with pedestrian traffic being on that road, and that being the only section of sidewalk on that road, pretty much at that, at that juncture.
Josh, we heard that about fifteen years ago with Belvedere across from Walmart. So, the planning commission and city council did not have, I guess, whatever, to put sidewalks in on Belvedere, so therefore, there are no sidewalks on that entire street. So, people who'd like to walk and have dinner, or whatever, are forced to, and we don't know what's coming in the future over, I understand your five thousand traffic number, but...
Dr. Organe, this is Josh King. Across the street, across Douglas Bend, the planning commission approved in the fall, it may have been December, a FMDP for an apartment complex, which did include a sidewalk along Douglas Bend Road.
Oh, good, okay. Is that directly across from this development?
It covers most of the area across the street from this development. It does intersect at Vinings Boulevard.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
One, one other question that might clarify something. Would installing the sidewalk along that area cause those trees to have to be removed, or cause them to die?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then, I'll agree with John that it's a bad place for a sidewalk.
Yeah, I can attest to the fact that if you, if you cut into that berm right there, you're going to be cutting through a lot of those tree roots, and a lot of those are hackberries, which if you cut through the roots of a hackberry, you just look at it wrong, it, it'll be dead in three, four years. And also, Matt, to address, one of the points you brought up earlier, it was a really good point. We actually addressed this issue about the rear garage access on these drives, on these private roads. We have a minimum driveway length from the public sidewalk to the garage door, and then we also have a maximum total length. The idea was that either you need to be able to park your vehicle so that the, on the drive, so that the nose does not cover it over the public sidewalk, or you need to make the drive so short that there's no possibility of even pulling a vehicle in there unless you're going to pull in the garage. Staff, if y'all want to correct me on that, that's what we, I'm pretty sure that's what we put in place over at the coves, and I, I thought it would apply to this as well.
I mean, I, I know we try and definitely look at that now. I mean, that truck in the picture is a pretty big truck, so I don't know, that's like a weird example. But, I know that's something that we definitely look for now, is to make sure that a car can fit this feasibly. Foxland Ten, I mean, I wasn't even here when Foxland Ten came through, so I don't know if it was something they were looking at in, like, two thousand fifteen yet, so...
You're right. This may have been, I think this was approved before we addressed that. The first time I saw us address that, that rear driveway, or that rear parking spot length was over in the coves at Fairview. So, is there any other discussion, or comments, or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow them to strike the sidewalk from their plan.
Okay, we have a, motion by Councilman Fennell to approve their amended preliminary master development plan, removing the sidewalks from their, from their plan, and it was seconded by Albert Strather. Did I restate your motion correctly, Sean?
That'll work, I believe. Thank you.
Um, any discussion on that?
I, I do have a question.
Yes, Dr. Organe.
I just don't want this to sound self-serving, or negative, but they're going to save quite a bit of money by doing this, and I'm not asking how much a sidewalk would cost along there, but is there possible, and, and I think we've been told before, the attorney will probably tell us, that we can't vote to not have the sidewalk if they give us some money to use somewhere else for sidewalks. But I think that ought at least be brought up. Sean probably knows a lot more about sidewalk needs in Galtin than any of the rest of us. No, I can't say that I do, but I've been involved in some of it, but, you know, that's a pretty decent idea right there, Mr. Organe, if we can navigate through, if we can actually do that or not. I, I don't want the developer to have to estimate what a sidewalk would cost, and then give us like amount of money, but they might be excited to give us, you know, a third of it, or something, if we can, or they could designate it to some area where, where there's some need that might actually fit in with their community. Well, I think if they got, with Dick Tuttle, if we could find out, I guess it'd be Nick, and, and we got other projects throughout the city that, that we do need sidewalks, and they might be able to, the footage, or the link, they was going to be able to do, and discount it down to where they can add some footage to another project that we'll fix it today.
Commissioners, we do have a provision in our code that allows for payment, a fee in payment of blue, and of not providing a sidewalk. And let me see if I can pull that up for you real quick here.
So, what I would want is for them to feel like they've won, and that they are not going to mess up that berm in tree line, and spend a whole lot of money on sidewalks, but they might be excited to make a donation to something. I totally agree with you, Dr. Organe. Ask, ask the representatives to speak to that.
Um, I think it's something that I would have to discuss with, with my folks, and to see if that's a reasonable request, and, and to see if we would be able to do anything. We're in the final stages of finishing this development, and I know that back in two thousand and sixteen, we, we begin these discussions. in 2016, we um, we began these discussions with, with you folks and, and um, um, the engineering department indirectly agreed with us, and um, so therefore, they wanted, and via email, they wanted us to come back and, and to come through this formal process. Now, um, how it got pushed to the side, or, or I'm not really sure, this was before my time here, um, but I don't know, knowing that the community and knowing that the residents within that community, they go out of this area and do most of their walking, because I've seen them in other phases of Foxland, um, but I don't know. I just can't answer that question.
Bill, did you look, Bill, did you find anything in, in pay, in pay alue of?
Yes, sir, I did. Uh, section 1309050 is a, a form in our code that allows for the establishment of microwave sidewalk trust fund, and it allows for payment in lieu of providing a sidewalk along a major or minor arterial or collector street. And as I recall, when we first were reviewing this project some time ago, is that we intended for this sidewalk that was located, it's to be located on the side of the private street to actually serve as a public sidewalk for that portion of Douglas Bend Road. So, they designed it in some other fashion there, but it did provide that.
A quick example I could give would be if there was some sidewalk available on that section of Douglas. 31.
I'm not pulled that up, but what you just advised the commission about, is that regarding if they were building a sidewalk on a roadway, then instead of doing that, in lieu of doing that, then they can make a contribution? Because this is a private roadway that we're dealing with, so does that make a difference?
That's right. It does talk about as a collector or arterial roadway, and as I was explaining, this was part, the intent, as I recall, was that the sidewalk on the opposite side would connect and extend down to the boundaries of this uh, master plan, where uh, the north boundary is, which backs up to a driving range area, but along, uh, even though it would be on private property, because there is a restricted right-of-way width for Douglas Bend Road, it's essentially a prescriptive right-of-way, but that the other uh, leg of the sidewalk would join at the intersection of Douglas Bend Road and Vinings Way. So, the, this other plan, which I think we have a screenshot of, shows the sidewalk wrapping around the south side of the private road, also adjacent to, and that, and that wouldn't make sense, it's not really needed to have it adjacent to another public sidewalk that's available on Vinings Way. The intent here was to connect it up to the intersection and have it extend uh, parallel on the backside of the private road, but to serve the sidewalk needs for Douglas Bend Road as well, up to the northwest corner of this site plan. Now, we understood there was a ditch there, a limited right-of-way, and some trees, and that's why we looked at the option of, like we just did with another project tonight, of not necessarily requiring it in the right-of-way. But as, as you mentioned, um, there is a prep plan already approved on the west side of the road that will include a sidewalk on Douglas Lane, or, oh, excuse me, Douglas Bend Road. And uh, some future phase of that would also extend that sidewalk up towards the Foxland Market, not necessarily in front of the Foxland Market, or in front of the Alberto's Restaurant, because those are existing already, unless they were to redevelop, or the city were to participate in some sort of sidewalk in front of those. So you'll have some gaps in there unless we can work a deal to uh, fill those gaps on the west side of the road.
Well, you could have a sidewalk on 31 that goes towards Fairview or Publix, or goes the other way towards uh, Kroger Marketplace, um, that I think would be beneficial to the community of those individuals, so.
Yeah, we're getting those as, as projects develop and up and down that corridor.
Dr. Organe and Mr. McCork, uh, can we work with the applicant to table this item and bring it back at a work session, once we've all?
I withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion.
Also?
Yes.
Who made, who made the second to your motion, Sean?
I did.
Mr. Strawther did.
So, Alana, Alana will need to withdraw her second first.
I withdraw.
Okay, the second has been withdrawn, and Councilman Fennell, you withdraw your original motion?
I sure do.
Okay. Then, um, Josh, did you say, you said bring it back to a work study? Did you mean defer this to the next uh, uh, meeting, or?
That, that, that is what I intended to say, Mr. Purrier. The uh, we can bring this up again for discussion at a work session, the next work session, once city staff has had a chance to uh, talk through all the options, both internally and with uh, Mr. Gibbs.
Very good. So, do I hear a motion uh, for deferral?
Motion for deferral, and, and also, I'd like to make sure the discussions that was done prior to this, if we can do a little research on that.
Yes, we certainly will.
I'll second the motion.
Second, uh, motion seconded by Mr. Strawther. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to defer the item, please indicate by saying aye in response to a roll call vote. Josh, call the roll call.
Mr. Strawther?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler?
Aye.
Councilman Fennell?
Uh.
Mr. Wilson? Dr. Organe? Mr. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have a unanimous vote.
Okay, uh, the item has been deferred.
Am I allowed to ask a question? Or not anymore?
Tomorrow. Feel free to call our office tomorrow, and we'll be happy to work with you on this item, Mr. Gibbs.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbs, I didn't realize you wanted to, still wanted to speak, but I've closed the item, so uh, um, under other business, um, we have a Tennessee Grassland Fairview Clubhouse has some uh, issues regarding the final master development plan and some tree work, so uh, been asked to uh, include that on the item just for discussion, not, it's not a voting item, but uh, uh, do we have a representative for Tennessee Grasslands on the phone?
Yes, we do.
Hello, Bob?
How you doing?
Very good. What, what is the item within regards to the trees?
Yes, when the uh, the site plan was approved almost two decades ago, it had a, a landscape plan that was approved and, and installed. Now, a lot of the landscaping has matured and overgrown, and uh, what we'd like to do is remove some of the trees that were part of that landscape plan 20 years ago.
Bob, this is Sean Fennell.
Hey, Sean.
What are you talking about?
We've just got a bunch of, if you look at the front of the clubhouse, you can just see, we've got a row of trees, it's totally overgrown.
Yeah, I got you.
Taking the view, and um, the, the, you know, the landscape plan was a good one when it was created, and for the first few years, it was great. Well, now, all these trees have just matured and overtaken the landscape, and we just want to thin them out, we want to take, take down some of these trees.
Are you going to put some new, new, smaller, younger trees in there?
Well, in some cases, the, the trees around it have matured, and it doesn't need anything, so.
I got you.
We just want to remove the trees, we'd love to do it within the next few weeks, and um, would love to uh, ask y'all if y'all could allow us to work with staff to gain that approval, and um, and, and show them a, um, a master plan marked up of the trees that we want to remove, and be allowed to do that without coming back to the planning commission.
Yeah, I'll just chime in and say, I've seen this, uh, Bob actually asked me about the ALA Elms that are in front of the, the front door of the clubhouse. It's supposed to be like a nice, um, well, as the name implies, an ALA coming from the street to the, the front door. They've gotten really broad and really tall, and also, it's hard to keep any turf alive underneath, beneath them, so it's in need of some renovations, sometimes things get overgrown. I'm, I'll make a motion that uh, um, the applicant work with staff, uh, if possible, directly.
I'll, I'll second that, John, it's not.
Yeah, actually, I don't know if I should have made a motion, it's not actually an a, a gender item, I'm just suggesting that we send that, uh, we won't vote on that, but uh, I'm just suggesting that applicant be allowed to go work with staff.
Yeah.
I'm not real sure how to handle that.
I, I'm, I'm sure whatever y'all do over there, Bob's going to look good, so I don't, I don't have any problems with it.
Does anyone have, rather than taking a roll call vote, because it's not an item to deliberate on and vote, does anybody have any input or questions or guidance for them? Or, or is everybody okay with just sending them to work with staff on that?
I live there also, and I feel comfortable with whatever he does.
I'm okay with it.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, well, Bob, if you'll, if you'll work that up with staff, I'm sure it'll look great.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Now, everybody, we've taken control of your webcams, so you can't leave. Uh, we've got some training coming up, uh, does everybody need to take a, uh, does everybody need a few minutes at the break, uh, before we get started into our training?
Yes, I'd like to take a break.
Mr. Chair, could you officially adjourn the meeting?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hibbler, I need to do this officially, so um, well, no, we don't have to.
You got a first and second, that's good enough.
That's good enough, all right, very good. Let's take um, um, five minutes and uh...
That is perfect.
Yeah, and we'll need to bring in uh, the BZA members that will be joining us as well for the training.
We might need five minutes, don't you?
Yeah, we'll need to log them in and make sure they're on as well.
We're already disconnected from Facebook.
We are not, we are still recording and live on Facebook, but we will go off of Facebook for the training.
Yeah, the training only needs to involve the planning commissioners and BZA members and uh, staff, if I guess, if they want to stick around and watch that.
This is open to the public, but there is not a public comment on the training.
Josh, did you ever, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to remind everybody during the training, if they don't mute your microphone, make sure that you remain muted. But what were you going to say, Sean?
I was just curious about this, uh, Ms. Mendoza, uh, lady, if she had business in front of our uh, body, or, or was she actually at, at the light place that we could help her within the city? That's, that was just my question.
Ms. Mendoza, your line's been unmuted?
Uh, yes.
Did you have any questions or comments for the board?
No, I'm good, I'm, I'm, I have everything clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you, uh, what time, we're going to take the break?
So we are, the, the planning commission is taking a break, and then we're going to have an hour-long legal training from uh, an invited guest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll stand adjourned, and um, we'll set everybody back in about 10, 10 minutes, or maybe a little bit longer, all right.